I used to have a treadmill. I keep it in my little office in the front. Best place to use it. And I read while I'm doing it. I got my Kindle. I put it on large print and just read the whole time I'm doing it. Trying to figure out how to get Penthouse Magazine on my Kindle and I just can't get it. My wife wouldn't appreciate it either, so.
I'm sure one of the girls has.
You notice that Conway's letter did not criticize Victorville for council not being representative of our Hispanic population.
No.
Only criticized us for our African-American population. I'm assuming Eric is of Hispanic. I don't, I don't know.
African-American.
I don't know why they don't complain that the Irish-Americans are not adequately represented.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm with us.
Yeah, come on.
After Thursday night, you lose standing.
In several elections. Wonderful, I'd love to have you. Does an apple valley? I just got a one that's up. I can tip your finger.
It is five o'clock. And I called to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have your call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern's absence is noted. Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
May we have declaration of closed session by our city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have four items on the agenda this evening. Items A and B are existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. It's the SEC versus City of Victorville litigation. The full name of the case and the case number set forth on the agenda. A is on behalf of the Airport Authority and B is on behalf of the City Council. We have two other items on the City Council agenda. Items C and D, both anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. With respect to C, pursuant to government code 54956.9E1, the facts and circumstances need not be disclosed at this time. With respect to item D, the facts and circumstances are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. I skipped over requesting for anyone in the audience to come forward and address the console, but I don't see anyone present, therefore we will recess and to our closed session and a regular session convenes at 6:00 P.M. It is 5:01. And I called to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have your call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern's absence is noted. Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
May we have closed session announcement by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had four items on the closed session agenda this evening. Two were existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. That was the SEC versus City of Victorville litigation. One was on behalf of the Airport Authority. Item B was on behalf of the City Council. No reportable action with respect to those items. Item C was, again, for the City Council. Anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 546.9D2 and pursuant to government code 54954956.9E1. We need not disclose the facts and circumstances of this case, on this case. Item D is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 and the facts and circumstances pertaining to that is set forth on the agenda. There is no reportable action with respect to either item C or D.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the pledge of allegiance. And first of all, the invocation. And the invocation will be delivered by Pastor Todd Arnett from the High Desert Church. And after that, we will have the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Chief Sam Lucia. Please stand.
Father God, we came before you tonight. Very grateful, God, for the fact that we are a part of the City of Victorville. Thankful for the things that you are doing in our midst. Thankful for leaders like these who assembled together tonight. Our prayer would be that you would give them discernment and wisdom. Give them, God, compassion and love for the people that they govern and oversee. And, God, we pray that this city would be a city that would honor you. That this city would be a place where people thrive. It'd be a place, God, where people from all different backgrounds not just live side by side, but, God, truly live out community. So would we be a place that honor you? And would this meeting tonight be one step further in that process? We thank you and we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
This evening, we have two presentations. The first one will be military banner presentation. And the second one will be congratulations to Ryan and Sean Garcia for their achievements at the 2016 U.S. Boxing Junior and Youth Championship. And I will come down and do the presentation. The City of Victorville is proud to have been the first city in the High Desert to honor our currently deployed servicemen and women with our Military Banner Program. Since this program debuted in 2007, we have presented close to 150 banners to our brave men and women currently serving a presidentially declared war zone. Tonight, I have the great pleasure of presenting a military banner to honor and recognize Corporal Conrad Estorga. I would like to invite Corporal Estorga's wife, Cassandra, to join me, please. Thank you, Cassandra, for being here tonight. As we dedicate this banner to honor your husband, Corporal Conrad Estorga. Conrad and Cassandra will have been married five years this April. And tonight is also a very special evening for their son, Christopher, as today is Christopher's fifth birthday. Happy birthday, Christopher. Corporal Estorga has been a resident of Victorville since 2005 and he joined the United States Army in 2011. Corporal Estorga is currently deployed and serving in Iraq on his first deployment. On behalf of the City of Victorville, I would like to thank Corporal Estorga for his service to our country. I would also like to thank Cassandra, Christopher, and their entire family for their support of Conrad while he serves our country. When Corporal Estorga comes home this May, he and his family plan to go on a well-deserved vacation. When he returns, we look forward to meeting Corporal Estorga and honoring him with another ceremony to present him with his military banner. Until that time, Corporal Estorga's banner will be flown in our parking lot for all to see and appreciate. I'd like to bring your son over so that we can have some pictures taken. You can, yeah, bring them both. At this time, I would also like to thank the sponsor of Corporal Estorga's banner. Judy White is an independent contractor with Applied Maintenance Supplies and Solutions in Apple Valley. Is that you? Corporal Estorga worked with Judy in the civilian workforce a few years ago. He made such a favorable impression on Judy that when she heard he was serving in Iraq, Judy asked if she could sponsor a sign, a sign to honor and recognize him. Ms. White is the wife of one of our retired city building inspectors, Jim White. The Whites are here tonight to show their appreciation to Corporal Estorga. Thank you for your sponsoring this banner. Cassandra, is there anything that you would like to share?
I just wanted to, first off, thank Judy for everything. Sorry. And just to let you know that Conrad also has very much appreciated you from before and to this day, he still does, you as well, Jim. And I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Garcia for presenting us with this beautiful banner here. And thank you to Victorville City for just supporting all of the deployed soldiers from prior and even future ones. So, thank you.
I thank you very much. I believe I was supposed to stand over there by the banner. So we'll move over there so that you can take a picture over here. On behalf of the Victorville City Council, I thank you for your family's sacrifice and sincerely hope you know how much we appreciate your husband's service to our country. We will keep Conrad and your family in our thoughts and prayers. Now I have Ryan and Sean Garcia. Please come forward and join me. I wish I could say that I'm your relative. But anyhow, I can be your grandma if you want to. I am very pleased to have this opportunity to recognize Ryan and Sean Garcia for their outstanding performances at the USA Boxing Junior and Youth National Championship in Reno, Reno, Nevada, this best January. Ryan won the 132-pound division. He served a gold medal. He received a gold medal and was named to the United States Youth Boxing Team. Ryan will travel to Russia in October to compete for the U.S. Congratulations, Ryan.
That's you? Yeah, thank you so much.
You have to be Sean, right? Sean Garcia won the silver medal in the 106-pound division and was named an alternate to the United States Youth Box Team. Congratulations, Sean. Through their hard work and dedication, these young men are distinguishing themselves as two of the best boxers in the country. And they are making Victorville very proud. On behalf of the Victorville City Council, I present you with a certificate of recognition, Ryan. And on behalf of the Victorville City Council, I present Sean Garcia with a certificate. This evening, we do not have any revisions. Or, or city clerk, do we have any revisions to the agenda?
No revisions tonight, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. There are no revisions. We have no appeal hearings. And we also do not have any public hearings. So we move on to consent calendar. The consent calendar items C1 through C5 can be approved with one motion unless an item needs to be pulled for discussion.
Move for approval of consent calendar?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. McEckern absent.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D1, Approval of Waste Tire Clean Grant Application. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council approve Resolution Number 16-010 entitled "A Resolution of the City of Victorville hereby authorizing the Director of Development to apply for a CalRecycle Waste Tire Cleanup Grant Program Cycle TCU 16."
Thank you. Is there an action taken on this one? Yes.
Second.
By Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. McEckern absent.
Item D2, Award of Construction Contract to Cooley Construction, Inc. in the amount of $76,245 for the Stoddard Wells Road grading and paving project. Recommendation that the City Council, Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council appropriate an additional $91,495 from Fund Number 250, Measure I. Add the project to the Measure I Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan and award a construction contract to Cooley Construction in the amount of $76,245.52 for the Stoddard Wells Road grading and paving project.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. McEckern absent.
Item D3, Bear Valley Road Bridge Over BNSF Railroad Additional Appropriation Federal Highway Bridge Program Grant Funds. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council appropriate an additional $177,060 of federal highway bridge program grant funds to the Bear Valley Road Over BNSF Bridge Project for P, S, and D plan specifications and estimates.
Just a question for staff, since it's on the agenda. Could you tell us again what the time schedule is for this project? When it's going to start? When do you think it'll finish? Keith, you want to handle that? You want me to handle that or should we call Brian?
I've got it right here.
Oh, okay.
Right now, the process is for us to complete all the design work, get the plan specs and estimates done. Estimate start of construction is summer 2017.
And how long do you think it'll take to finish the construction?
We tried, Brian.
Is there a good chance it's going to make an even bigger mess on Bear Valley Road going over the railroad tracks?
Imperiorly, shouldn't we?
The construction is supposed to take about one year. You can't do any overhead construction in the fourth quarter of the year over the railroad tracks. That's a BNSF requirement. But the estimate is about a year. And we figured out a way to keep all the lanes open during construction because it's going to be widened on both sides. So while they widen one side, all the lanes can remain open. Then they'll widen the other side. But there will be some disruption still. You could, you could expect some congestion as a result.
Say BNSF doesn't want any construction during the fourth quarter, fourth calendar year, fourth quarter fiscal year, fourth quarter federal, which is...
It's the fourth quarter of the calendar year. Yes. No overhead construction. You can do construction, but they don't want to stop any of their train traffic during that quarter.
Okay.
They don't want to take the risk during the holiday chipping season.
Okay.
Do we have a motion here?
We need a motion on this item.
A move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. McEckern absent.
Item D4, Presentation of Request to Approve Award to Purchase Four Trucks under Project Number ES16-063. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council and the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the award to Sullen Ford for the purchase of four trucks under Project Number ES16-063 as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2015-2016 capital improvement project budget.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. McEckern absent.
Item D5, Action Plan for Strategic Planning Session. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council discuss and approve the recommended action plan.
Madam Mayor, have a quick comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I did appreciate the opportunity for us to sit down together and talk about this. I thought we had a really good conversation. When you're, when you're going from a session that we had to, to now actually coming up with an action plan, there are things that don't have timelines in here, as an example. And I understand that. I know, you know, we talk about customer service training or we do have something coming up with the planned unit development. I believe there's a meeting on April 13th. But there's some things in here that I think we would like a little bit more detail on as we go through the year and just not wait till next year, as an example, to, to, to go through this. And just, I would caution city staff to, you know, these are certainly recommendations. And, you know, when you start talking about planned unit developments, as an example, those are very specific and different from typical housing that has occurred in the past. There's a lot of pros and cons when you have larger projects like that. But there's also a lot of opportunities. And I hope that the city staff will work with our stakeholders and really do something we can all be proud of. I know that there's a lot of enthusiasm from all the folks that have been involved when we talk about, you know, the future planning of our city. And one of the things is also possibly to think outside the box. There are other ways to go about things. I know as a state park, as an example, is something that is a high priority for me. And I understand that there are limitations within the city-owned property, et cetera, et cetera. And I certainly understand that. But I would just ask for some creative recommendations on everything that we talked about. Because there's a lot of great information in here. I would just lean on and defer to city staff to be a little creative in hopefully getting us to where we'd like to be. But I think that was a great session we had. I'm looking forward to just a lot of these things evolving.
Yeah, and the purpose of this item is to have some formal adoption of those things that were discussed a couple of years ago. that were discussed a couple of months ago. The actual action plan itself is intended to occur, these are the things we intend to do during this calendar year. The only one that I would caution the council on that is a bit of a bigger project, and with the focus on PUDs and specific plans, would be number four, develop a planned growth strategy. I don't think we're going to accomplish that in calendar year 2016, but we can at least make some strides in that direction. That's the intent. But everything else is intended to be accomplished within calendar year 2016. And where we knew or already had it in the planning horizon with a month, we tried to add that just for specificity. But overall, with the exception of the planned growth strategy, I believe all these things will be accomplished. And then we intend to have another sort of, rather than just a revisit, which is what this one was, sort of starting afresh. Granted, many of the strategic goals will likely be similar or the same, but we want to do this on a recurring every other year basis following an election. So we're looking at probably a January, maybe early February timeframe for our next strategic plan to incorporate, you know, any new comments from potentially new council members.
Just a comment on item number two, code enforcement. Sunday morning, my wife and I, we live in the Green Tree area, and we walked, something we don't do often, but we walked over to the IHOP. We should do it every Sunday, but I'm not promoting IHOP. It was just a nice walk.
[laughing]
But one of the things that happens when you walk through town as opposed to drive through town is you see things that you never see as you're just moving down the street. And so we had a chance to walk through a number of parking lots along the 7th Street with some of the changes we've made in the medians, but one of the things we both noticed was the condition of a lot of the parking lots along 7th Street, and it's pretty shabby, pretty bad. I don't know who is actually responsible for keeping the trash out of the parking lots and the plastic bags that grow across, blow across the parking lots into the bushes and hang up in bushes, and it just creates a kind of a general messy condition. And I know we've talked about this some in further north on 7th Street in the Old Town area, but I would sure like to see us address just the trash conditions. We can't put tenants in abandoned buildings when they're empty. We can't force that, but we, seems like we can do more to deal with some of the trash that we see on 7th Street.
Yeah, we can certainly send an officer that direction and other areas as well, if anyone knows of any. We've had some success with other retailers, although the conditions tend to come back. You know, our ability to use code enforcement to really enforce those things has, is sort of in a gray area, I'll say. But just simply code enforcement officer paying a visit to the manager has effectuated those cleanups pretty quickly. It's an ongoing issue, though, but we can certainly send someone that direction.
We need a motion on this?
There is a motion needed on this item.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. McEckern absent.
Item D6, reorganization. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the reorganization, which includes salary and position changes effective April 1, 2016.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a fairly small reorganization that I'm proposing. It sort of was born out of our looking into recruiting for our former Public Works Director, who really was overseeing three and a half departments or so, looking at the possibility of hiring probably two and maybe even three additional department heads, putting them on contract. The salary demands and things of a contract position was just not something that we were ready to propose or interested in proposing, to be honest. So I sat down with Mr. Metzler and also with Mr. Webb to discuss sort of the overall city organization, and came up with this plan to make a bit more of a hierarchical setup in the city. It effectively puts four department head level positions reporting to each of two assistant city managers, Mr. Metzler and Mr. Webb, and then with one sort of an in-between position, a contract department head over development, reporting directly to me. In the past, the council has made it clear that's an area that you want my direct involvement in, so I maintain that. But just spreading those duties out a little bit and that supervision and oversight out a little bit frees up a lot of my time to be able to concentrate on development as well as concentrate on some of the strategic initiatives that the council has laid out in our work plan. Ultimately, this gives both Mr. Metzler and Mr. Webb a larger piece of the organization they're responsible for, takes them more so out of the day-to-day operations of those individual departments to more of an oversight role. This was possible because of the good staff that we have in place now that we didn't want to lose and didn't want to bring someone new in. So that's the purpose of it, and it does result in about $150,000 a year savings through the elimination of that contract position and no additional positions. There are some adjustments in responsibilities as a result. The airport director, should that title be adopted, would take on a larger role at the airport, as would economic development director, should that title be adopted, would take on a larger role in the actual day-to-day operations of marketing as well as some real estate issues. Mr. Metzler would still provide that oversight, as Mr. Webb would provide similar oversight over community services, which that director currently reports to me.
Yes?
Madam Mayor, I have read this carefully, and I have some concerns that Mr. Metzler is taking on an even greater role. However, that's between Mr. Metzler and the city manager. But we have talked about how important it is, the base, and how full that plate is. And I had assumed they were going to hire at least one and probably two department heads to take on the functions, but as of now, that's not going to occur. And if the city manager believes that the reorganization should occur as he has proposed it, you know, he's going to be responsible. I agree that he should do that. I've looked at the salaries. It's not very, it's not very much of an increase. The reorganization occurs now. I'm concerned about a little bit of perception that we deal with salaries for all the employees at one time, and we deal with salaries and benefits at the budget time, and we're making some changes, and we're not dealing with the other employees. Sometimes that has to occur. It may or may not be necessary for the manager to come back to the council for more modifications as this works or doesn't work, but I'm going to vote no on the whole issue because I am opposed to employment agreements with department heads and assistant city manager. I understand the city manager has a contract. A lot of this is personal. When I laid off 200 employees, they got too big notice. They had responsibilities. It was heartbreaking, but they didn't get six months or nine months of severance pay. They didn't have a contract. And these employees, I think, to keep the philosophy that we work, that they all work for the city, they all work together, they're all equal, and it's the employees themselves who do the work. My belief has been in the past that this drives a wedge between management and employees, and I think you're inviting unions to do this sort of thing. I'm opposed to it. I'll be voting no for that reason, not because of the reorganization, not because of the salaries, but because of the contracts.
Well, can we address those issues separately? In other words, the reorganization has one issue and the contracts. Jim, you're suggesting there really need not be a contract for anybody but the city manager?
That's my preference. The city manager, the city attorney should have contracts, but I can't. I just, I don't know. I just can't get an agreement for my philosophy and how it's viewed by all the other employees. Seems to add protection for certain employees, puts them in a category. I would like to treat all the employees the same. We appreciate all the employees. We don't add that protection to other employees that do key work or other department heads. I just think it's wrong. I won't vote for it.
Just for clarification's sake, these employees are currently on contract. Their contracts include recurring reauthorizations every two years, similar to the way mine has been written in the past. These are not new contracts. These are extensions to existing contracts with a new implementation date of April 1st, just for the council's information.
How many do we have on contract?
At this point, we have myself, Mr. Metzler, Mr. Webb, both on contract, and there are two others that are on contract at this time. Previously, we had as many as six or seven. I know at least six.
What is, explain the rationale for the contract employees? I have employees. Nobody has a contract. I don't even have a contract.
Right, right. It's becoming more typical with executive-level employees, city manager, assistant city manager, deputy city managers. It's less popular with department head positions. I can tell you right now, I don't have any intention of adding any department heads on to a salary position. It was something that was expressed to me by other city managers that has been effective for them. I don't want to say that it has or hasn't been effective. I haven't seen a lot of change one way or the other, whether department heads were on contract or not. So I'm disinclined to add any additional contracts at this point in time. With the assistant city manager positions, there is at least an assumption on my part that they tend to be more in the public, more engaging with the council, and more susceptible should there be a significant change on the council to being terminated without cause. And that's the entire purpose. You know, it's something that we've talked about on several occasions. I understand Mr. Cox's disagreement with me on it. It's just a difference of opinion to me.
Is the council ever in a position to look at a position below your level and make a hiring or a termination decision?
It's really more of a legal question. It's not typical. The municipal code says you hire the city attorney and you hire me, and everyone below me works for me.
Right. The decision-making process with respect to administration of the city is up to the city manager. Here, to the extent you're willing to do it, you can do contracts and go and basically, Mr. Robertson could still set the salaries and the benefits and be in charge of all of that. He just has done the contract, which the council would have to authorize the contracts. It gives both, I think the philosophy is both parties then have a higher level of commitment to one another.
My purpose for wanting contracts is that when you get to the level of department head and especially higher, that if there is, if there are issues, I'll say, the thought of going through an extended disciplinary process with someone who has some measure of power over this larger portion of the organization is just untenable. It, for me, it's a decision that I would need to make and simply terminate that person if there were a disciplinary action that rose to that level. The protections of regular line employees are effective. They're very real, and disciplinary actions take a very long time. And that's, that was my original purpose, my original desire for putting, you know, management level and hire employees on contract was to eliminate that. We can simply have a conversation, and if it's not working out, it's not working out, and we can move on without having to keep someone employed through a disciplinary procedure that can be cumbersome.
Well, just, I'll make this comment, and I think it's probably all I have to say. I don't, I don't have any particular feeling one way or the other about the contract, and if they're already in place and this is extending, I guess I'm reluctant to just remove them. My only objection to the contracts that I read was the difference in the severance period. We reduced yours, as you know, this year. I believe those severance periods ought to be six months. I don't see any reason for a difference in the severance period between the two assistant city managers. So that would be a change I would want to make. Other than that, I guess I don't have a real problem with the contracts.
And part of that has to do with their plans. I don't want to make announcements for Mr. Webb, but in the conversation, you'll notice the terms are also different. In our conversations, the three of us, Mr. Webb has indicated that he intends on retiring either on or before the termination of his contract, which would be December of 2018. That's part of the reason why there was no change made. His severance previously was six months, wasn't a great concern of his, isn't a great concern of mine or Mr. Metzler's with the current council, to be honest. So that's the difference with the term, was his was previously six months. He didn't indicate a desire to make it longer. Mr. Metzler's previously was 12 months, as was mine. In respect to the council's desire, when my new contract was adopted, you reduced it to nine months, so similarly, I matched that contract. Mr. Metzler was put on contract about three months after I was. His contract mirrored mine then, and it effectively mirrors mine now. It's a four-year, although he has six months remaining now, so in effect, it's more of a three and a half-year extension, which is similar to what I had. So that's the reasons behind it. I understand it may look a little bit odd to have differences. They are things that we discussed, and we're all comfortable with.
I have a question. How long have these other folks been on contract, or when were they originally?
Mr. Metzler originally went on contract September of 2011. Mr. Webb, probably about a year after that. Is that correct, Bill? I want to say July of 2012 is my guess, without looking it up right now. At that point, Mr. McGlade, who's no longer here, was on contract. Mr. Gunter has been on contract for, I want to say, two years now, and I believe Mr. Borcher, probably a little less than that, maybe a year, year and a half.
Well, we'll get it off the dime here. I'll move approval for the reorganization.
Is that with the modified, oh, just the reorganization?
Yeah, I'll just approve what's suggested. I mean, those explanations make sense to me, so.
That would then include the salary and position changes, recommendation is.
As well as the contracts, just to be clear.
Severance pay.
It includes, it's reorganization, which includes salary position changes, right?
Right.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with Mr. Cox voting no and Mr. McEckern absent.
Item D7, consent to dual representation by Best, Best and Krieger of City of Victorville and Civic Rogers LLC and Employee Civ LLC. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council consider whether it is appropriate to provide for the approval of the consent to dual representation, and should such dual representation be approved, authorize the city manager to execute the disclosure and consent letter on behalf of the city.
Madam Mayor, I've read this a couple of times, maybe three times, and I lost. I just have no idea what we're doing or why we're doing it. Somebody explain it.
If I might explain, Best, Best and Krieger currently serves as your Employment Labor Council. So any time that they were to represent any other entity that might have an adverse position to the city, they have to come and seek your consent and a waiver from the client, which you are their client. Here, they want to represent an entity that previously entered into an on-a-participation agreement with the former redevelopment agency. It was a complicated transaction that was never fully developed, so there are some basically open-ended issues as to performance requirements. So they want to represent the developer in that capacity. Unlikely to have any conflict or interference with their role in terms of their providing employment and labor representation to you, but in order for them to be able to represent the private sector entity, they need your consent. And there are some protections in the letter. If, to the extent, at any time a conflict should appear to arise, we could raise that. At that point, they'd have to disqualify the representation. So they're just seeking to represent essentially a private developer to determine whether or not there are ongoing obligations under on-a-participation agreement.
You don't see any problems with...
I don't see any problems, as long as it's a very limited representation. But again, it's your decision, not my decision.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. McEckern absent.
Now, we move on to public comments, and I do have one card. Michael, I'm not sure I can pronounce your last name. Reka? Reka? Three minutes, yes, sir.
This is the first time I've used my timer on my clock.
We will keep you informed of your time.
Okay. The reason I'm here is to request the city council a contract awarded in January 26th for the citywide air conditioning maintenance contract.
Can you get closer to the microphone, please? Thanks.
Request cancellation. I was a participant. I was actually the low bidder on the contract, and I was disqualified for improper reasons by the city staff. I'd like to briefly go with those. I have a detailed summary that my attorney's already filed with the city of the improprieties by the city staff. The first was, they called me the day after the sealed bids were turned in, and they said I had two days to amend my bid with additional pricing, which was not in the bid summary. And if I didn't do that, I'd be disqualified. I did that, and then they decided that I did not properly... Well, first of all, you can't amend a sealed bid after it's open. You have to cancel it, amend it, and give the bidders new time to bid it. You can't just informally request a modification to a sealed bid. So that should be immediate cancellation. Second thing is, they told me I didn't properly attend the job walk. Now, a job walk, by the city standards, is you're on there on time, you sign in, and you wait for the whole meeting. That's the procedure. The city staff feel that I should have done a detailed summary of all the equipment, even though a detailed summary already existed in the set of specifications. It's not a legal reason to disqualify. There has to be a legal reason, such as I didn't attend the job walk. That was the basis of my disqualification. And number three, they issued an internal memorandum on the 13th of January that I was disqualified, but they did not share that with me, so I did not know I was not going to be awarded on January 26th, and therefore, I could not defend my case. So, you know, the city's obligated to follow rules, just like I'm obligated to follow rules, and they can't arbitrarily amend the rules to make it convenient for whoever they want to be awarded the contract. Therefore, I feel it's only fair that the contract be canceled, and I be given a second chance to be awarded, as I was the low responsive and responsible bidder.
You have 30 seconds.
And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Normally, when an individual approaches the city council, it's on an item that if we had known about it, it could have been agendized. We don't generally discuss it because maybe other members of the public would have been here had they known we were going to discuss it. So this item, we cannot engage and debate or discuss it directly with you. But because I've heard this issue before, I'd request the city council refer this matter to the city attorney. The attorney can report back to the council at the next meeting, and we could agenda it.
Is that the consensus of the council? Okay.
Any information that you have and data and writing and documents you need to forward them immediately to the City of Victorville, attention, city attorney. And just leave it then, but whatever data you want to have considered, you have to have that.
Just for the city council's benefit, I am aware that the risk manager has had some correspondence with the legal firm involved here, so certainly he can provide that city attorney, get him up to speed. Perhaps this is a close session item for the next meeting.
I can coordinate with the city with the risk manager as well.
Okay. Very well. City manager, reports from city manager?
Yeah, there's a couple of upcoming events. Tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, at the Hilton Garden Inn, we have our Bear Valley Road Information Session. It's intended for those businesses along Bear Valley Road who will be at least somewhat impacted by the repaving of that and pouring concrete over the summer, beginning, I believe, in April. Public is invited to that as well, but the intent is for those businesses to come and ask questions. We'll have city engineer there. We'll have other management there, as well as I suspect some of the council may show up. And that is, again, 6:00 PM at the Hilton Garden Inn in the conference center in the back. Coming up, March 26th, is our Spring Festival and Easter Egg Hunt at Hook Park. It's always a popular event. It's actually starting out with a run in the park at 8:00 in the morning, if you're a runner. And then we are still taking volunteers for the Community Cleanup Day, which is going to happen on April 9th. You can get a nice photo taken and be part of the statistics in next year's State of the City. Hopefully, we'll have more than 1,000 volunteers again and collect tons and tons more trash, so. And then finally, just, I'd like to apologize on behalf of our fire chief, Dan Muncie. He brought me some leftover cookies from our Rotary Meeting that somehow had managed to find their way to my place setting during our break in Rotary, and he brought them to me. And I just want to apologize, since he didn't bring any for the council, I'm happy to share the cookies that he brought me, if any of you are interested.
Did he hand those to you after he touched them?
I do not know. All I know is they showed up at my lunch setting when we did our open networking, and they happened to show up here, and he winked at me when he came in the room.
Oh, well, I don't want to touch them at all now.
So I'm making assumptions that he was involved at both occasions. But anyway, payback is tough when you have a microphone in front of you. Dan.
Council members, any reports?
I have one item. The road condition at Palmdale Road and I-15, the interchange on each side is getting worse as each day goes by. When are we going to repave that? Or Alcaltrans, or the city and Caltrans jointly? It just can't keep going this way.
Yeah, we actually reached out to Caltrans, we being Mr. Gangler, the city engineer, and what I'll do based on that is ask him to forward the comments from Caltrans. I will say that it was not good news. We're looking at sometime in 2017. I intend to follow up or have staff follow up. There are some areas that are much, much worse than others, and Palmdale and I-15 is one of them, and then again at Palmdale, and I want to say it's Amargosa, but I'm not sure, where it's not just that it's ground, but there's actually huge potholes that are developing as a result. So effectively, what the email said was that they don't have any plans in 2016. They plan to actually finally repave that sometime in 2017. But I'll ask him to kind of summarize that in a memo to you, and then also to reach out to see if some of those more problem areas can have something done. Maybe they can be ground again to eliminate some of that up and down in the pavement.
I think it's deteriorated to the point that it appears to be that the flying gravel and small pebbles are becoming dangerous to the vehicles, and it seems to me that maybe if we can't get Caltrans to work, we need to ask the mayor to direct a letter to the appropriate committee in Sacramento, including our senator and our assembly person. This is... Roads are in bad shape. I think it's a hazard.
Why can't we fix it?
Maybe we need to.
I mean, it's a state highway, but Seventh Street is a state highway. Palmdale Road's a state highway. I mean, that's a city street. Why can't...
Maybe if we fix it, it'll let the governor have a few more dollars for his speed train to nowhere. But this just can't keep going. It's horrible, as far as I'm concerned. We need to put it on the agenda and make the repairs if the state refuses.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. I don't know if you're looking at wanting to repave the whole thing. I suspect that would, all of, any of that, anything we want to do to Caltrans Highway would require a permit from Caltrans, which, not to beat them up too much, but I don't know that that would come any faster than their actual resolution themselves, to be honest, from what I've seen in the past. But certainly, we'll reach out directly to the director of District 8 and express these concerns and sort of let him know what's headed his way, if we can't get some sort of relief to the situation sooner than what they're currently proposing.
It's like a great opportunity for the Daily Press to take two pictures, one of the horrible condition of this road, and one is agricultural field where the train is supposed to go to no place, and say, "Your tax dollars at work, thanks to the governor." I mean, there's got to be some pressure to be brought here because of the ridiculousness of that. There's damage being done to automobiles. Not that I don't think that the governor cares, but he probably doesn't. But that's why we have government, and if the state's not going to react, I think we don't have a choice but to start moving forward as a council. Hate to do it. I don't think we should do it. Our roads are in such condition that we need to spend those dollars better. And we have another solution. Since I'm the recipient of a damaged windshield as a result of a truck, we can have the whole area marked "Notty Truck Route" and prohibit the trucks from driving on it. At least that'll reduce some of the property damage that's occurring.
Very well. We can do that. Anything else?
Yes, I have a couple of comments, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate all the efforts the city has, cleanup week, clean sweep weekend, the Community Cleanup Day that's upcoming, and I certainly encourage folks to participate. I know I will. You know, no matter how much work we do out there, the wind has a way of making plastic bags just available just soon as we're done. It goes back out, and that's okay. And I certainly just want to thank all the folks that have participated in these community cleanup weekends, because it's unfortunate, but it is what it is. And you look around this community, I have been getting off at a certain exit for the last eight years, and I would just like to thank the Sheriff's Hope Team and the city staff for addressing things like the homeless moving from place to place. There was one particular place I highlighted, and that was addressed with a homeless issue, and I really appreciate that. But certainly, I just hope that the city residents know that city staff are working these issues. It's a continuous issue. The Hope Team, Sheriff Team's doing a fantastic job, but that doesn't stop things from happening out there. I mean, shopping carts, as an example. You know, it's the first thing you see when you come into the city, and it's just like, okay, we are working these issues, but I would also like to highlight, in addition to the community cleanup, I will be pointing out some illegal dumps that I've been alerted to. I was not aware, I'm not an off-road person, I don't have an off-road vehicle, but apparently, some of my folks I talk to have told me about some issues, and I'd like to bring it up and continue working with the city staff and the great folks that are out there that care. But just as much as we care about our desert, there's some folks that don't, and they're going to keep doing what they're going to keep doing, and we're going to keep doing what we can do in a positive way. So I thank everyone for being involved and look forward to be more active in this, because it's a continuous problem.
Yeah, let us know that location, and we can send a crew out there to simply clean it up. We found that more effective than trying to go through the lengthy code enforcement process to get the property owner to clean it up.
Anything else? If not, this meeting is adjourned.
I knew we would be out of here by 7:00.